Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, July 7, 2025 will come to order. Katie, will you please call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Genowine, Helwig, Cheesman, Mura, Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from June 16, 2025 special meeting? In the June 16, 2025 regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Counselor Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cheesman. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes? There a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt the agenda by Counselor Price. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Mura. Any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Welcome Counselor Genowine. I think Katie's got it. Thank you, Katie. Next item would be visitors to be heard. Under visitors to be heard, persons addressing the council shall come to this podium, speak your name and address at the beginning of each agenda item. Members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard for any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. On each agenda item, any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item at the beginning after public, or correction, after explained by city staff. Public testimony will then be closed to the topic and given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current item unless the councilman removes to allow another person to speak and use unanimous consent to the council. However, questions from council members may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer anytime. Is there any visitors to be heard for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a proclamation for Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Vermillion, and whereas park and recreation is of vital importance to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region, and whereas Vermillion's park and recreation programs build a healthy and active community that aids in the prevention of chronic disease, provides therapeutic recreation services, and for those who are disabled, and also improves the physical, mental, and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas our parks and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas the city's park and natural recreation areas improve our quality of life, protect groundwater, improve air quality, provide vegetative buffers for developments, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the United States House Representative has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month for the 40th year, and whereas the city of Vermillion recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation services. Now therefore, be resolved, we, the governing body, city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month, and encourage all residents to participate in the observance by being outside and enjoying our local parks and recreation areas. Due this day, 7th of July, 2025. Jim, do you want to come up?
Thank you, Mayor Cole, and members of the council. Just wanted to really extend my sincere gratitude and thank you for recognizing Parks and Recreation Month here. I think it just shows the value of this department in our community. It also highlights the effort and work that our full-time staff put in to make these facilities and activities happen. And just a quick recognize, our recreation staff, Tyler Trigaser and Justin Myers, our park staff, Dan Hanson and Kelly Knutson, and then also the hundred-plus seasonal staff that make it happen throughout the year, from winter activities to the pool to whatnot. So really would like to say thank you to those folks that make that happen. And lastly, to thank you guys for supporting all the things that we have going on, from new parks coming online to new court complexes and such. It just doesn't happen. So Mr. Prescott, our city manager as well, to you guys to make the funding available for us. So we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland, you have something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we just completed the Shakespeare Festival in your park that you set. We appreciate that it was well-mowed. We appreciate that mosquitoes weren't there. The weather, I'm sure you're responsible for that too, it was perfect, by the way. But we hope we left it in the same wonderful condition as when we first got there. You did a great job. We greatly appreciate it. We had our biggest output, so.
I'll make sure I pass that along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move on to public hearings. First one is a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC on Thursday in the Platts, beginning in July 10, all the way through August 21st from 4:00 to 8:00 on Thursdays.
Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for Thursdays in the Platts. Events on or about the following Thursdays, July 10, 17, 24, 31, and August 7, 14, and 21, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The events will be held at Radigan Platts, half-block of Market Street, south of West Main Street, and West Main Street, as it abuts to the Platts. The police chief's report map of area being used and notice of public hearing are attached. The police chief's reported that there were no incidents with the events held in previous years. Event coordinators from the VCDC confirm that a wristband system will be used to verify ages of 21 and over. Age will be verified using the individual's identification before the wristband is provided. Signage will also be used to indicate where the alcohol is not allowed. VCDC staff and volunteers will be present to oversee alcohol purchases and consumption. As the event will be held on city street and city property, ordinance allows the city to include such conditions and restrictions as the governing body may deem appropriate and consistent with state law. The VCDC is requesting a permit to sell beer and wine on city property. The individual selling the beer and wine may or may not be the VCDC staff or board members. The VCDC has provided a release and indemnification, releasing the city from liability for the events and certificate of the insurance, and the city has additional insured has been received. The city has received a $30 per day fee and a $20 advertising fee for a total of $230. Administration recommends approval of this special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC on or about July 10, 17, 24, 31, and August 7, 14, and 21, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. At Radigan Platts, half-block of Market Street, south of West Main Street, and West Main Street, as it abuts to the Platts for the Thursday and Platts events. Approval recommended only if the city council is comfortable with the applicant holding the license and property, distribute malt beverages, and regulate the event, and applicant is in complete understanding and agreement with regard to any conditions and restrictions the city council may require after further information is provided at the public hearing, and the motion should also address the request to use the Radigan Platts.
Thank you. Nick, is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. Discussion by council. The motions? Correct. Motion approved by Counselor Holland. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Lieber. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have a special permit to exceed permissible noise levels by more than, no more than 50% for the VCDC Thursday in the Platts for the same dates that we just mentioned, and also to have a downtown concert series.
Yeah, the VCDC has applied for a special permit to exceed allowable noise levels for Thursday in the Platts events on the following Thursdays, July 10, 17, 24, 31, and August 7, 14, and 21, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Events will be held at Radigan Platts, half-block of Market Street, south of West Main Street, and West Main Street, as it abuts to the Platts. The city council will need to determine if the events are in a suitable location with appropriate facilities during the allowable time, and if the applicant can demonstrate the public benefit of the event. The $25 advertising fee for the special noise permit has been paid to the finance office, and the administration recommends approval of a special noise permit unless information is prevented at the public hearing indicated that there would be a problem related to the noise.
Thank you, Nick. Any visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion on council? The motions? Motion approved by Counselor Cheesman. Is there a second? Counselor Genowine? Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item was special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC again. This time though, for Friday, September 26, for the Oktoberfest on the Platts.
Yeah, the VCDC has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Oktoberfest event on or about Friday, September 26, 2025, to be held on West Main Street from XIX Brewery to Court Street, Market Street, to the Halle half-block south, and Prospect Street from West Main Street to the Court Trust Bank parking lot entrance and Radigan Platts. The notice of public hearing and police chief's memo were attached. The routine police department records check the parties involved with the special daily licenses revealed no alcohol-related violations or felony convictions in reference to this application. The police chief's memo notes that Katie Heine with the VCDC indicated there will be barriers and clear signage at all egress points. Staff will be checking IDs and wristbands for people 21 years of age or older, and staff will work to prevent people under 21 from purchasing or consuming alcohol. City staff is not aware of any problems with previous daily special, special daily licenses granted to Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company. As the event will be held on city street and city property, ordinance allows the city to include such conditions and restrictions as the governing body may deem appropriate and consistent with state law. The request to exceed allowable noise levels is also on this agenda. The street closure was approved on June 16, and the VCDC has provided a certificate of insurance and the city of Vermillion as an additional insured, and provided a release and indemnification, releasing the city from liability for the event as part of the street closing request. The city has received a $30 per day and $20 advertising fee for a total of $50, and administration recommends approval of the special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC on or about Friday, September 26, 2025. Approval is recommended contingent that the city council is comfortable that the applicant holding the license will properly distribute malt beverages and regulate the event. There is complete understanding and agreement by the applicant with regard to any conditions and restrictions the city council may require after further information is provided at the public hearing, and the motion should also address the use of writing in Platts.
Thank you, Nick. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. The motions? Motion to approve by Counselor Lieber. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item for the same event, be a special permit to exceed permissible noise levels, no more than 50% for Oktoberfest on September 26, from 4:00 to 11:00.
Yep, Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company has applied for a special permit to exceed allowable noise levels at the Radigan Platts on or about Friday, September 26, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. The map indicates the stage will be on West Main Street, facing towards the east. The application map of area and notice of hearing are attached. The city council will need to determine if this event is in a suitable location with appropriate facilities during the allowable time, and if the applicant can demonstrate the public benefit of the event. The organizers of the event have already paid the $25 fee, and administration recommends approval of the special noise permit unless information is prevented, indicating that there would be problems related to the noise.
Nick, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. For motions? Motion approved by Counselor Holland. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Mura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. It's a weather alert. We'll wait.
Yeah, so it's a city, not here.
Yeah, how come we didn't get that?
Well, we're supposed to get it tonight.
We don't need to evacuate, do we? Oh, you're fine. Next item, we have a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Clay County Fair Board for August 7 through the 9th of the Clay County Fair. Katie?
Thank you. So the Clay County Fair Board has submitted this application for malt beverage and wine license beginning on August 7 and running through August 9. This is for Beer Garden for three of their events that are going on during the fair. The police chief's memo is attached, and as this event will include a dance and a band that will be on city streets, the ordinance allows the city to include such conditions and restrictions as the governing body may deem appropriate and consistent with state law. The police chief recommends parameters to be established for this event. Those were listed in your memo. Those consist of carding people, wearing wristbands, and having staff prevent underage people from drinking at their events. All fees have been paid, and administration recommends approval of the special daily malt beverage license for the Clay County Fair.
Thank you, Katie. Is anyone, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion or motions by council? Motion approved by Counselor Price. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Cheesman. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, we moving on to old business. We have a second reading of ordinance 1535 amending chapter 115, reference to regulations on tattooing and body piercing.
Yes, thank you again. So state statute allows cities to regulate tattooing and body piercing. We adopted an ordinance in 1995 that provided inspections of tattooing establishments, and then in 2010, we added a section to include FBI and DCI background. Since an applicant had addressed concerns about the restrictions of the FBI and DCI background checks, we looked into revising our ordinance to remove all of those restrictions, but adding a section that requires a suitable applicant, kind of basically like our alcohol licenses, where they would, or I mean peddler's licenses, where they would get their background check from the clerk of courts and then give it to us, and then we would dictate if they were a suitable applicant for this type of license. Adoption of the ordinance will be the only, or publication will be the only cost for this, and administration recommends approval of ordinance 1535, and a roll call vote will be required.
Thank you, Katie. Is there any visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Counselor Lieber?
What different, what different information we get from clerk of the courts rather than DCI or FBI?
It'd be, it'd be local, and the clerk of courts information is public record. Information that if DCI was to submit, they would only get an NCI, which is for law enforcement.
So the clerk of courts would just be local, so if they were at a court.
It'd be state. It'd be statewide, sorry.
Statewide. So if they were out of state, then we wouldn't know anything, right? I mean, if there was something bad happened, we wouldn't know. We're just going to be in the state.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, but that's how it would be if it's just from the clerk of courts, it'd just be within the state of South Dakota.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, he said he would agree. It'd just be.
And people, it's basically the same thing, just from the state. You're okay with that, but not FBI stuff?
It does state in the ordinance, submit a record of current background check from all states where the applicant has resided or conducted business during the preceding three years. So it would be, or the age of 18, whichever is less. So they would, if, so for example, if they just moved here from, say, Iowa, they would still have to submit a back report from the courts in Iowa, correct?
Yes, they would. So this just makes it so that they don't have to, because currently, as our ordinance stands, they can't be a felon to get a license. This is making it say if they haven't been a felon for three years or so, and it makes it a little less restrictive of, we have to wait six weeks for a background check to come back.
Any other questions from council members? Are there any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Counselor Holland, a second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion on this matter? Seeing none, going to go to the machine. Be eight yays and zero nays. Motion carries. Next item we have is moving on to new business. We have a resolution authorizing the use of Grover Million funds for the water and sanitary sewer basin study. John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll kind of kick it off, then Jim Peterson with the VCDC is here to maybe get into any more specifics you might have. With your 2025 budget, you did include a $100,000 pledge for the Grover Million campaign. Just as a reminder, you came back in January this year and provided funding for 2026, 2027, 2028, 2029, but tonight, we're just talking about the $100,000 that you committed for 2025. That $100,000 pledge was $75,000 from the BBB fund and $25,000 from the Second Penny Fund. Whether with our past campaigns, when it was known as Vermillion Now or Grover Million, whenever you pledge Second Penny funds, before those were utilized, the VCDC would come back and make sure that those uses of the funds were appropriate. And not that they'd be inappropriate, but they met the same definition as if the city was using that funding. So they would only use the money and things that the city could use Second Penny funding for, which does have some restrictions with regard to, it has to be used for economic development, infrastructure along that line. The VCDC is hoping to complete a study with Banner and Associates, a utility infrastructure study. It's kind of been called the East Side Facility Plan. The cost of that plan is $69,800. They would, the request before you is to use the $25,000 of Second Penny funds from the 2025 budget. There's also would be 2,000, excuse me, $25,000 of bed, board, and booze funding that can be used only for economic development and promotion of the community, but that does not require them to come back with each one of those applications and have that approved by you. So we're only talking about the $25,000 of the Second Penny money at this point in time. There's a resolution attached which would indicate that this is an approved project, and that once they have the receipts, they turn those back into you, and you would refund them for the cost to make sure that the money is expended according to what the plan is. This plan is helpful for the city as we apply for Department of Ag and Natural Resources grants or loans, also Community Development Block grants. One of the things they're going to want to see is a facility plan. So having this in place will help us, whether it's five years from now or 10 years from now, that we have a plan which has identified this need. This plan will look at projected flows, what those might be with different types of developments, the flows in those areas, and then how that impacts our overall system as it comes back and connects into our water, wastewater system. So it's a needed first step towards any sort of future development that might happen in that area. So I don't know if Jim has any comments he'd like to add to that or answer any questions you might have. Counsel?
No, thank you, John, for that. We work closely on this, as you know, and our plan for the city to grow, it's going to grow north, it's going to grow east. So this east side study, we started it probably since January, talking about it. We looked at a couple estimates from another one to make sure this was appropriate. We work very closely with city engineer and staff, and this will meet their needs. And like we said, if it's partial funding, we're going to fund it. Once we get it paid for, receipts, we turn them in for that $25,000 portion. That meets the criteria that we're asking for tonight, and the study, as John alluded to, can be used over many years. If we didn't do this study and had a developer come in on that east side, you're probably going to wait about eight months for this study to get done, and depending on timing, you may wait then another year before you can submit grants, is my understanding. So it moves us ahead a full year, or maybe a year and a half, in our planning, get ahead of it to grow. And if you have really detailed questions, I need to defer to city engineer because there have been all through this before, and Shane.
Any questions by council? Counselor Holland?
What is an environmental review?
To the depth of it is, making sure. Do you want to explain that, Jose?
That's my, I guess the easiest way for me to explain is that they're going to be reviewing to make sure that any construction that would happen over there would meet environmental, it's not affecting the environment negatively, I guess, whether going through wetlands or any of that sort of items, I guess.
Anything we cover up is going to affect the environment, so.
Yeah, but I mean, same thing with development, right? Any development affects the environment. You're still going to have development. So this type of requirement would actually make sure that it's not going to be affecting it more than necessary. Maybe that's a way to put it.
Second question is easy. The evaluation they do, do they include how long it would take to get it done? In other words, you had a contractor coming in and say, "We need to put in 2,000 feet of pipe. We can do it in two months, six months, or two years."
No, this is just going to be the study that says that we need the.
That's kind of unfortunate. They won't say, "We need this," and if you do it, it takes 10 years.
No, because that's going to be, that's going to be project-based, right? It'd be like saying a house, to construct a house is going to take three months. I can't, nobody's going to tell you that. Contractors don't even tell you that. This is just going to be for the need of the study. If the study's going to be needed, and if there's the funding, if it validates the need for additional funding through the state, that's what this is going to be for, just so we can get funding.
One project at a time.
Well, for the, for the east side of town, which is a pretty big, it's a pretty big project, yeah.
But we wouldn't have to do this for every project we brought in, we evaluate the area, and a business comes in, puts in the business, we have to do it again for the next business?
If we're going to be getting state funding, yes, we would. But what we're hoping to do with this is that we get the funding, or we do this study, get the funding once to do the trunk line, and then after that, then we're hopeful that we can afford the smaller projects. When I say small, I, I don't know if they're going to be a million dollars or five million, right, but they're going to be smaller. So this is going to help us have the bigger project done. If you want to put it in terms of a house, we're building the entire house. We're just leaving the basement unfinished. Later time, we will finish the basement ourselves. So that's a smaller project that we can do. We might not need to get a whole mortgage to get the house, but we can finish the basement ourselves.
But in fact, evaluating for the house, it does cover all those things we have to do evaluation every single time we make a change?
Not necessarily, but yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Price?
Sure. So John, you've kind of said, well, in John's memo, you kind of said five to 10 years. Have we ever done one of these before? If so, how far, like, how long ago was it? How long do the results of this anticipate to last?
Shane, he deals a lot with these.
Yeah, so the most recent one that we've done, if you guys remember, is just 2023.
Yeah, so the most recent one that we've done, if you guys remember, is just 2023, we did the northeast lift station study basin. And so what's really nice about these is once we have them, we have the bulk of it. So if it needs to get updated, let's say, five years, 10 years down the road, then it's just maybe a small little kind of update on just any new projections or different things like that. But that base study is gonna be there for us as whenever we need it.
Any other questions by council? Is there any motions? Look, motion approved by Counsel Price, is a second by Counsel Holland. Any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, thank you, Jim. Uh, next item, we have a request to close Main Street and several other streets, portions that are in the downtown area for the annual Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll event. Maddie?
Thank you. The Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll organization has requested the closure of West Main Street from High Street to Prospect Street. Prospect Street from West Main Street to Alleyway, half block north. Market Street from West Main to Bloomingdale Street. Kidder Street from Austin Street to the Alleyway Way, half block east of Market Street. Austin Street from Kidder Street to West Main Street, Rattigan plots. The public parking lot on the southwest corner of Kidder Street and Market Street, starting Friday, September 5th, 2025, at 6:00 a.m. until Sunday, September 7th, 2025, at noon. As well as West Main from Prospect Street to Center Street on Friday, September 5th, from 2:00 p.m. until Saturday, September 6th. And finally, West Main Street from Washington to High Street, and East Main Street from the Center Street to Church Street on Saturday, September 6th, from 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. The closures are requested so that teams can cook and inside and around their vehicles and not have to worry about traffic. Annual cornhole tournament on Friday, as well as the car show on Saturday, are the other parts of those closed spaces. The organizers will visit affected businesses and give flyers with dates and times of the closures. The 2:00 p.m. closure on, of part of Main Street on Friday is to allow downtown businesses to have better access on Friday during lunch, to businesses during, oh my gosh, on Friday during lunch hours. And it's the same closure that was requested in previous years. The police, fire, EMS, and street departments have all been notified and did not have any concerns. And the event coordinators will make trash cans available and have arranged a cleanup crew to have all the areas used, cleaned by noon on Sunday, September 7th. So administration recommends that the city council approve the list of closures for the Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll event.
Thank you, Maddie, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, any discussion by council at all? Any motions? Motion approved by Counsel Cheeseman, a second by Counsel Price. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, thank you, Maddie. Next item we have is an MOU with Dakota State University for Secure SD Cybersecurity. Alex?
Perfect, thank you. So during the 2024 South Dakota legislative session, they enacted Senate Bill 187, which appropriated 7 million to the Office of the Attorney General, and that was for the purpose of creating a cybersecurity initiative for counties and municipalities throughout the state of South Dakota. And Dakota State University operates Mad- Madison Cyber Labs, otherwise known as MAD Labs, which focuses on education, research, and cybersecurity development, including initiatives like helping counties and municipalities mitigate cybersecurity risks. DSU, in partnership with the Office of the Attorney General, created the Cybersecurity SD, or Secures SD Cybersecurity for Counties and Municipalities, to help kind of strengthen those cyber security risks and kind of become more resilient. So Secure SD is designed to support counties and municipalities and kind of help mitigate any cybersecurity risks, help deliver training and awareness programs, enhance resilience, and kind of help find the best practices for these cities. So in this MOU that's attached, it indicates that the city will work with DSU to protect and enhance the cybersecurity of the city. It notes that it will be part, that to be part of Secure SD, the city must first obtain a security assessment either through Project Bounder Fence or through a private vendor. We've already done that, we did that in September 13th, September 13th, 2021, and it was completed on May 27th, 2022, and that was with the Project Bounder Fence. The security assessment is attached. Post this assessment, the city developed their, their own cyber incident response plan in case anything were to happen. The MOU also notes that the city must actively participate in Secure SD initiatives to exonerate a single point of contact for communication, implement, and maintain cyber, cybersecurity measures. The MOU also notes that any hardware licenses or software purchases as part of the scope of work becomes a sole property of the city, and this MOU is attached. Any financial considerations, there's none at this time. It is funded by the appropriation established by the Senate Bill 187 during the 2024 legislative session. The Office of the Attorney General will approve vouchers, and the state auditors shall draw warrants to pay any expenses. So the administration recommends approval of the memorandum of understanding with Dakota State University for the Secure SD Cybersecurity.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council at all? Counsel Holland?
What is a managed service provider?
Managed service provider?
It's in DSU Responsible Days 3.2.
I'm sorry, where was it at in the? Yeah.
Consultant. They, in other words, they interface with consultants to do the consulting for the software they have?
What was the question?
What's a managed service provider? What do they do?
So they, so basically, what DSU is doing is they're managing the state's contracts, so they're managing the networks. And then they allow us to piggyback off of that. So it's basically a contract.
Engage with managed service providers to determine appropriate scopes of work for work and to review work as needed, based on DSU recognition.
Yep, so they went through our entire system, so they hired a firm. The firm came and went through our entire system to see where our security breaches were. And then they gave us a report back. So that, that provider was just like a contractor that they used.
Okay, so that's a long word for consultants?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question, so this study was done in 2021. Does it, they don't require us to do a new one? Because obviously with cybersecurity, technology, I mean, everything, literally computers, I have sleep from the moment you take out of the store. So that's why I asked, with this being four years old, are they gonna require us to do a new one soon? Or anything like that?
I don't think-
I don't think so, I think the one baseline of information, kind of where we were starting out at that point in time, for them to get around the state and to get so many of the different cities and counties on board is gonna take them some time. So they were comfortable, that one was done with DSU, they're comfortable of, of that being our most recent study.
Okay. Counsel Toller?
Were there any deficiencies found in 2021 when this was done last time that, that they kind of pointed out, or any glaring weaknesses?
No, thinking back to the assessment that we had, we had an employee that had clicked on some things that he shouldn't have, you know, they didn't have a fishing type thing. He's not with us any longer, but not because of that, but it was really quite interesting. It was, they pinpointed in, in that, and they found some things that we could do better, but not a lot of glaring weaknesses. I just remember the one employee was one who had a couple of different failures.
They had a harder time getting around our firewalls than anything.
Yeah.
Who do we, who currently manages that, or how do we, who does our security now?
NetSis Plus, out of Sioux City. No, this was just a consulting to see if we had any breaches, so. No, this is just for the study that we did.
Any other discussion? Is there, is there any motions? Motion to approve by Counsel Genoine, is there a second? Second by Counsel Murrah, any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, just want to take a moment to quick pause. Yankton County is under tornado warning, so if we have to pause the meeting, we'll vacate to the basement. Heads up on everybody, so just wanted to give that, because it is headed southeast. Or we can get done speedy, we'll see. Next item, we have a MOU with Clay County for, I'm gonna butcher this word again. Pic- pictometry?
Pictometry.
All right.
Perfect, thank you. So this is similar to two other requests that have been submitted in the past. The first one was in 2011, and this was with the Clay County Director of Equalization, kind of helped fund a pictometry software project. What this does, it provides a high solution image of properties in Cypher Million in a good but not as high resolution of images and properties in the rural Clay County. A company specifically flies the county to obtain these images, and the city in Clay County entered into this memorandum of understanding to provide for the, this first round of pictometry, with an option for a second round. Each round was for three years. The city cost for the first three years of the six-year proposal, which was from 2013 to 2015, was about $4,821. The cost for the last three years, from 2016 to 2018, was $4,622. And 2018 came about again, six-year agreement was up for renewal. Submitted another request, and with that first round, the city, it cost the city for the first three years, twenty, from 2019 to 2021, about $5,630 per year. And then the cost for the last three years, from 2022 to 2024, was $6,857 per year. So the Director of Equalization, Lene Wilson, has submitted an updated memorandum of understanding. They're entering into another six-year contract, and they're asking if the city would be willing to go into another three-year contract with, you know, with an option to continue for a second, another three years after the second flyover. Again, this is the same arrangement as previous years, and the cost is split between the county and the city, each paying one-third of the total amount. The remaining one-third of the total cost is split between Clay Union Electric, Clay Rural Water, and the Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company. The cost for 2025 through 2027 is $6,853 per year. The cost is allocated among the different departments that utilize the images. Administration recommends the approval of the MOU with Clay County to provide pictometry for at least the next three years, with the option prior to June 30th, 2027, to determine if the benefit warrants participation after that date.
Thank you, Alex, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for any discussion? Counsel Holland?
Do you know if they go out for bids for this operation and just renew this every time? I would think it'd be getting cheaper, drones are getting better and cameras are getting better, it keeps going up.
I, I don't believe the county does, I think they've, they did initially, but once they summon their, on pictometry and beaking that package, I don't know that another entity can come in and do the pictures or do part of it. I think it's, it's a package deal once they kind of pick their path. I guess if you will, if they selected their software, these are kind of really updates to that same software.
And basically for us, it's $2,000 a year, right? One-third of that? It's $6,800, so it's a total of $2,000 a year.
I'm trying to-
Which isn't bad for the whole thing, but I think that's pretty high. I mean, you get some pretty good resolution pictures now of drones and cameras.
Yeah, our, excuse me, I want to double check that, because I know Maddie and Alex are just working on the bill. Our annual amount for the city is $6,853.
Okay, so-
Yeah, that's, well, that's the city's third.
So roughly, total bill will be about 18, 19,000.
That's hard to read in this thing, financial considerations. It's per year, the cost is allocated among three departments, so it's not, so, okay. I misunderstood that, but it was easy to misunderstand.
Any other questions, discussion? Any motions? Motion approved by Counsel Cheeseman, is there a second? Second by Counsel Price, any other discussion on this item? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, next item, we have first reading of ordinance 1536 to amend Title 11. In reference to regulations governing transportation network drivers and companies. Maddie?
Thank you. We were looking at the, this chapter, and we found a lot of redundancies within the regulations that govern taxi cabs and transportation network drivers and companies, or TNCs. Taxi cabs and TNCs had almost exactly the same requirements, but were listed separately. And there was a third definition provided, which is a vehicle for hire, which was any vehicle licensed under the chapter as a taxi cab or TNC personal vehicle. So this encompassed both kinds of vehicles, and so we had three definitions going on for the same thing, essentially. In 2019, there were changes made to alter the background checks requirements and add a requirement to provide a copy of the company's sales tax permit to prove that they were in good standing with the state, but nothing to do with any redundancy, redundancy changes. The purpose of the changes was to streamline ordinance by removing redundant language. And the proposed amendments eliminated redundancies between taxi cabs and TNCs by utilizing the umbrella term vehicle for hire for both of them. The separate sections that are specific to each TNC or taxi cab remain in the code. The revisions did not create any new regulatory requirements or alter the current intent, rather just clarifying and simplifying the ordinance. The adoption of the ordinance will only involve publication costs, and administration recommends advancing ordinance 1536 to a second reading on July 21st, 2025.
Thank you, Maddie, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council? So just to clarify the current procedure, if somebody wants to do, say, Uber or Lyft, they have to come to City Hall, apply for this permit, pay their fee, go through the background check? And what, and the requirements here, and they would be able to operate, is that correct?
Yeah.
So if they were Ubering in Sioux Falls and came into Vermillion to drop somebody off? Because the reason why I ask this is I know that the hospitals oftentimes will utilize Uber and Lyft if somebody cannot get a ride and they have to bring them back. Are they in violation from the moment they wa- they drive into town just because they are dropping somebody off from another city?
I don't believe so, because they're not starting the drive. So it's not like they're conducting business in the city. They're just operating within, I guess. Since they're not, if they were to start a ride in Vermillion, like, start from Vermillion back to Sioux Falls, then that might be in violation. But I don't think dropping somebody off at the hospital coming from Sioux Falls would be-
Daryl, you got any input on that?
Yeah, I, I would agree, and I, and I think the distinction too is, yeah, commencing at the regular due business, interstate commerce would probably prevent the city from saying, somebody coming from Sioux City dropping somebody off here is not permitted, or, you know, that's the closest location I could think of. But yeah, I think you'd have problems preventing or trying to regulate commerce coming through when it's not based out of, or initiating from the city, so.
Yep, Counsel Price?
So is it about where the financial transaction is taking place, then? For the driver, where the driver is located from the financial?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, if that's the case, then it would be the end, because you don't get charged until you're done.
Technically, since it's like a reservation, I don't know, because like they hold your payment in like the Uber app. You have to like, agree to pay. So I don't know if that impacts it.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna go through this a little bit more, just to do some more research, I, I, yeah. Anyways, any other discussion? Motion advanced by Counsel Murrah, is there a second? Second by Counsel Lieber. Any other discussion on this? Counsel Genoine?
I, I do have a question about the rate card part.
Which part is that, just to clarify?
It is 114 dot 06, section 06. How does that work, like, do, does Uber and Lyft, do those provide the fair calculations?
Yes.
On their app, they do, they do, oh, good to know, okay.
It tells you when you accept their ride, like, how much it'll be.
Oh, right, but that's not like really the method. It just shows in advance what the rate would be, is that, is that what?
Yeah, they can't show a rate to the finance officer, because it changes. Yeah, they can't show a rate to the finance officer, because it changes. How, how many rides there are, how busy they are, how many other Lyft or Uber drivers they are. It varies, so I don't know how, if they're use Lyft or Uber, they could provide that to the finance officer. Good catch.
Well, it says that it would provide it on the digital network. I'm just wondering if on the network, it said, because like, I thought that was kind of proprietary, and, you know, like you indicated there, it, they do surge pricing. So how, how would that work?
I think if we've ever received this, and one of the challenges is, we don't have very good compliance with this, in terms of drivers doing this, is that we get ranges at best, that say that their range would be, I'm making up a number, $20 to $50. That's about the best we get from them, if we get them to comply with this. And we've struggled with their, their compliance. The national firm says, oh sure, yeah, we'll do this, but they don't help us out either.
So what is the, I guess what is the intent of this ordinance? I mean, why, why do we have this? If we know that Lyft and Uber and all these TNCs and places are already conducting these checks?
That was, well, they, they claim that they do their own background check and that they would not allow anybody to operate under their flag that did not pass their background check. That was when we had a conference call with them a couple of years ago, when we were setting this up. We did have some language in there, and they said, no, 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 we take care of that. And so we allowed that to happen. They would do their own background checks that way. A lot of this kind of originated on the, as Maddie referenced, the vehicle for hire language or the taxi cabs, which were a different, more local type company. That would come to you. Now it's become more national, if you will, with the TNCs, with Uber, Lifts, et cetera. And so it's kind of morphed from that. It's really more so to have an understanding of who's operating a business in the community that potentially could go south if somebody got in with a driver that wasn't good, that there's some sort of registration, some sort of local notification as to who that is. Again, it kind of, compared to taxi cabs, which before you had all that stuff. If you go back thirty years ago, when there are taxi cab companies, they got registered through the city, and they reported who they were, you had a point of contact, drivers, vehicle numbers, all that sort of thing. So it's, from that's kind of morphed into the modern day.
Right. Yeah, it, and that's why I just kind of asked, because obviously I know like with Lyft and Uber and using them, they have to pass all that stuff in order to do it, or else their vehicle's not going to be pulling up on the app to even get the, the signal. Now, if somebody wants to do harm, and they could put a Lyft and then just pull on up anyways and never have a ride actually scheduled through the app, but that can happen at any time, so that's why I didn't know. What are our specific intent here? Are we regulating too much? That's just my thought. Because you're right, this is very hard to police. Firsthand. Go ahead, Counselor Genoine.
Yeah, so we, we already have some ordinances around TNCs, right? And this is consolidating them?
It's just making changes to the current one.
Okay, so currently, the one, I mean, the taxi cab and TNC are in the same ordinance right now? This is just solidating language? Or, I mean-
Yeah.
Clarifying.
Does this, does this pertain if D-Day's a nonprofit organization wants to offer rides home to drunk people? Would they have to follow this, then?
If it's not for profit, then no.
So if it's a nonprofit, no, but if just some, some citizen, uh, the kindness of their heart wants to do it, and you give them $20 just as a, as a generosity thing, now it's a profit, and now they'd be in violation of this?
If they charged for it?
If they didn't charge for it, but-
If it's a donation, then no.
Okay. Correct. Correct, and I agree with that, but I'm just trying to think of the other, because there are. There are people out there, especially since, maybe not as much now, because we still have the Safe Ride solution, things like that. But there have been in the past, there has been entities out there giving rides to people, especially on those bigger events. Safe rides, or safer? The drunk bus?
That's Safe Rides.
That's Safe Ride.
Technically.
There's a, is there any other discussion? Otherwise, there is a motion on the table to advance. Counselor Cheeseman?
I feel like it's a sort of a cover-your-tail kind of thing. I mean, there's lots of liabilities that go along with picking people up, and things could happen, and I think it's good to have, at least it regulated to some extent, kind of get the city, responsibility of the city sort of off the back.
All of the regulations are already in place. This is just consolidating them, to use the umbrella term that was already provided, of vehicle for hire, rather than having taxi cabs listed as one, TNCs listed as one that say the exact same thing. And then also providing a definition of vehicle for hire that's also used some places in the ordinance, and so just using vehicle for hire across the board.
So we're not really changing anything?
No.
We're just putting everything in one-
Correct.
Consolidated package?
Yeah.
Okay.
So with this, do we do the background still?
No.
For taxi cab drivers, we do, but for TNCs, we don't.
We don't. The only reason I ask, I'm trying to think if there'd be some kind of liability if there was a person that was approved a permit, and we didn't catch it, because we, we, we have the regulation in place, we didn't, we didn't catch it. There's, are we liable for anything? By, by mandating this, then we, we just don't do a good enough background? Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about even the other way around. Because if we say, yep, we have this regulation in place, and now we, the city, fails to do a thorough background, because we have this regulation, we now could be liable that we didn't do it good enough? Does that make, am I right in that, Counselor?
Yeah, but I mean, the, starting point, the city always has governmental immunity. But if you ensure the, if you ensure the risk, and maybe by adopting this ordinance you do, but if you do an NCIC, I assume, if, when you say background, are you assuming that the police department's going to do an NCIC search? Because then, I don't know how that can-
Yeah, it looks like-
You could certainly rely on that.
Yeah, it looks like it's an NCIC one.
Yeah. For the, the local ones that Katie mentioned, yeah. Because the, the national, they're representing that they're doing their own, so I don't think we have, that's on them more than the city.
There's a whole list of-
Yep.
Things out there.
Sure. Okay. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll hear the motion? Okay, motion to advance. Counselor Mur and Counselor Lieber, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion advances. Uh, next item we have is planning and zoning appointments. So both state statute and city code ordinances address the appointments of members of planning and zoning. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of nine citizens of the community, and the board terms are for five years, and they're set to expire here in June. And five terms expired at the end of June 2025 here. Openings were advertised on the city's website and at the city council meetings, social media, and the broadcaster press, and actually included, we also, I believe, advertised through the VCDC as well. Current members on the Planning and Zoning Commission in term, whose years are set to expire here is Brian Humphrey, Jim Wilson, Doug Toovey, Nate Steele, Susan Heggestead. And then the terms that are not expiring are Brandon Weemers, Kevin O'Kelly, William Ames, and Matt Fairholme. Uh, we did receive quite a few expressive interest forms that were received and are attached in your memo. There are a total of nine applicants that were received. Out of the five incumbents, all five did reapply to serve another, another term. Under financial considerations, each member of the Planning and Zoning Commission is paid $25 of per attended meeting that they make. In reference, uh, looking at attending to reappoint all five of the incumbent members, Doug Toovey, Jim Wilson, Susan Heggestead, Nate Steele, and Brian Humphrey, who are currently serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. While I do appreciate the interest and strong qualification of their candidates, I do believe that continuity is critical at this time. Uh, we have significant items currently under consideration with development and expansion, with projects within the city, also with the ongoing matters that we discussed with the JJZA, and also in discussions with city staff and some current commission members. They're also in broad support of the reappointment of the five incumbents. Their experience and familiarity with both past and present pending matters have proven valuable in keeping projects on track and ensuring a thoughtful, informed, well-decisioned. These incumbent members have demonstrated a strong commitment to the community, and their experience provides important context and stability as we navigate pending projects, long-term planning goals. Uh, I do thank all the applicants for their willingness to serve, and I encourage them to remain engaged and hopefully for future opportunities to contribute, will certainly arise to, if not this board, another board that may seek their interest. I do welcome any feedback at this time from any visitors to be heard, and then the council. Seeing none from visitors, any feedback from council? Or is there a motion to approve all five? Motion to approve all five by Counselor Mur, is there a second? Second by Counselor Toller, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item we have is the resolution authorized the purchase of a four-by-four, one-ton regular cab truck.
Thank you. During the budget planning session, the city council included the 2025 equipment replacement schedule, and this included in particular to replace a 2005 Chevy one-ton dump truck used by the street department for maintenance purposes. Typically, the city avoids procuring bids, since this requires considerable staff time and additional resources to develop the specifications, advertise the bid documents, and evaluate the bids. Rather, the city tries to purchase directly from a local vendor, from an already awarded contracts, contracts such as a state, or from a purchasing agency, kind of like Sourcewell. As with other years, staff contacted Vermillion Ford for a price on the vehicle. In this instance, Vermillion Ford is able to offer a lower price than the price in the state's contact, contract for an identical vehicle. Uh, we do have a table in the memo comparing both of them. The state bid for a, a new Ford, one-ton four-by-four regular cab truck chassis was $61,575. Vermillion Ford was, for a similar vehicle, was $61,400. So it's a difference of $175. The 2025 Equipment Replacement Fund does have money for this purchase. We currently have $113,000 for this vehicle. This $113,000 also includes money for the body that will have to be purchased at a later time. The body is, right now, we're sc, we're estimating the body to cost about $60,000. Regardless, any savings that may occur will return to the fund and be used for the purchase of other vehicles or equipment. Uh, with that being said, administration recommends approving the resolution purchasing the vehicle from Vermillion Ford for $61,400.
Thank you, Alexi. Any others to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Counselor Cheeseman?
What, what do you mean, the body?
So this is literally just going to be the cab, and that's it. There's, for the, where the bed would be, it's just a couple rails. And then, at a later time, then they'll buy the body, so where the bed of the truck would be, they'll just put something in there. Uh, this one will have a dump body, and so they can use it to haul gravel or some materials that could actually just be unloaded that way.
Okay. Makes sense.
Any other discussion? Any motions?
No approval.
Motion approved by Counselor Mur and a second by Counselor Price. Any discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, Labor and Finance Committee report for employee longevity pay and vacation buyback.
Uh, thank you. Last year, we were going through our union negotiations. There are a couple items, if you will, that were left on the table. It was, uh, the language was written in there to see what IM28, what would happen with that. If that measure were to fail, as it did, then we would come back in 2025 and discuss two different items. One was a vacation buyback policy, and the other one being longevity pay. As the public knows, the measure did fail. We met with ASME a couple times. Uh, the Labor and Finance Committee met a couple of times and kind of, Labor and Finance kind of gave us the parameters within, within which to have the discussions. And then with ASME, we were able to work out some language there. So the report tonight is that the Labor and Finance Committee has two recommendations, one on vacation buyback policy, and the other one on longevity pay. ASME has agreed to the language as proposed. And so this is a report to you, and then we'd have language at the next council meeting for you to consider amending the agreement to include that language. I would note, we tried a vacation buyback policy as a pilot program back in 2022, so we have a little bit of experience with that. Uh, the longevity pay is an item that has come up many times with our union negotiations, and so this is an attempt to, uh, address that concern and provide a benefit along that line for our longer-term employees of at least fifteen years who are at the top of their pay scale. So we'd recommend acceptance of the report, and then we would prepare language to include some language like this in the agreements coming forward at the next meeting.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council? Counselor Cheeseman?
What does the longevity pay look like?
So, trying to navigate Fair Labor Standards Act language about, if you will, an amount that's guaranteed, and should that be then calculated and spread over the hours so that it's part of the base wage, which determines overtime? That'll be up to the city council, the way the language is written, is that the city council would determine a pot or a sum of money, and then that would be directed to the city manager and finance officer to then go through the employee list that we have and figure out how to award that. So you, as a governing body, would set the dollar amount, and then administratively, we would figure out how to make payment on that. There was some concerns, not concerns, desires expressed that those who have a longer tenure would receive a larger amount than those that might just meet the qualifications. So let's say we have a fifteen-year employee who may very well meet a top step, and that that step, at least three years, fifteen years with the city, versus a twenty-five-year employee. They'd like to see, this came from the employees, more to go to the longer-tenured employee than to the person who does meet the qualifications.
It's almost, looks like a profit-sharing kind of model.
Well, we don't make any profit in government, we're very good at that. But it is, it is kind of along that line. Yes, yeah.
Obviously, it helps incentivize people to stay and not leave quite as quick. Counselor Price?
I just want to thank John for his work on this. We had several meetings of the Committee of Labor and Finance and talked through a lot of options, and John was thinking out of the box and came up with some good ideas, I think, to, to help incentivize our employees to stick around with the city and meet, meet their requests where we could. So I appreciate John's hard work, um, working with the unions on this, and I would move to accept the report. Or can I do that, because I'm the chair? Can I do that?
Yeah.
Okay, move to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report, is there a second? Second by Counselor Cheeseman. Is there any other discussion on this? I kind of want to go back to work for the city now.
I'll get you a nap in the morning.
Any other discussion? Oh. Yeah, I'll have to go back to get that, you're right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion carries. Moving on to bid openings, first up, fuel quotes.
Thank you. We received four bids for our fuel this month. For item number one, Burnix, um, it, sorry. For item number one- For item number one, New Century FS won the bid with two dollars sixty-one-nine. For item number two, Burnick Service won the bid with three dollars and four cents. Item number three, New Century FS won the bid at two seven oh nine. And then for item number four, New Century FS won at two ninety-eight.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion?
We've approved all of the low bids.
Motion to approve the low bid by Counselor Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holland, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Next item, uh, we have, uh, South University Street and Linden Avenue improvements. Jose gets this one.
Thank you. So, uh, as all of you are aware, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we did purchase, uh, the Jolly School site, uh, with intent of, uh, raising the school and developing, or getting the site ready for, uh, construction of single-family homes and the construction of a park. Uh, since, uh, the purchase of that parcel, or since acquisition of that parcel, um, we have already, uh, uh, abated all the asbestos. Uh, we have also, uh, demolished or al- almost ready to be completed with the demolition of the building. Uh, and, uh, most recently, uh, in June, the city council awarded the contract for the construction of the park, uh, along the north side of Maple, so towards the south side of the site. Uh, the contract being considered today, uh, is for the removal of the parking lanes along South University Street and Linden Avenue. Uh, the construction of curb and gutter in the areas where the parking lane used to be. Uh, the removal and installation of storm sewer inlets along South University Street and the construction of several, uh, water and sanitary sewer services along Linden Avenue. Uh, the city did send plans and specifications to twelve plant houses, uh, forty-five contractors and four suppliers. Uh, out of those, the city received four bids, uh, that were opened, uh, on July second. Uh, out of those four bids, the low bidder, uh, was Walker Construction from Vermillion, uh, with a bid of two thousand, two hundred and three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Um, the city estimated construction cost was approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, uh, it was a good bid as far as we were concerned. Uh, start of the project will be coordinated to ensure, uh, with the current contractor, to ensure that the demolition of Jolly is completed prior to the start of the improvements. Uh, regardless, improvements will need to be completed prior, uh, to November thirtieth. Uh, this project will be paid, uh, through the TIF district that was set up for the development in that area. Uh, staff recommends that the city council award the base bid to Walker Construction, uh, in the amount of two thousand and three, uh, two hundred and three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion? Any motions?
No approval.
Motion approved by Counselor Murrah, second by Counselor Price, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay? Motion carries. Next item will be solid waste services. Alex?
Thank you. The city staff sent out solicitations of quotes to the six licensed haulers of Vermillion. These include Lauren Fisher Disposal, Fisher Disposal LLC, Vermillion Garbage Service, Waste Connections Arts Garbage of Norfolk, Nebraska, Waste Management of Sioux City, Iowa, and Herms Sanitation, Inc. of Rock Valley, Iowa. We did receive two back and that was from the Vermillion Garbage Service and Waste Connections Arts Garbage of Norfolk, Nebraska. With Waste Connections, they, their first, um, four scheduled service was in the amount of eight ninety-one per cubic yard. And then for unscheduled service, it was nine dollars and twenty-seven cents per cubic yard. Um, the second in low bid was from the Vermillion Garbage Service and their scheduled service was in the amount of six dollars and seventy-two cents per cubic yard and that was for scheduled and unscheduled. Um, this solid waste collection service would be provided to twelve municipal buildings. The quote is for three years. Administration recommends approving the all-inclusive price quote from Vermillion Garbage Service in the amount of six dollars and seventy-two cents per cubic yard for scheduled service and unscheduled service of waste collection.
Thank you, Alex.
Oh, I got sorry.
Any, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Only question I have, is this the same as where we're currently at?
Um, we were previously with Vermillion Garbage Service, but, um, for scheduled, it was five dollars and twenty-two cents and for unscheduled, it was five dollars and fifty-one cents.
So slightly increased, okay. Any, motion approved by Counselor Murrah, is there a second? Second by Counselor Toller, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, city manager's report, John?
Uh, thank you, just a couple items. Uh, two meetings before your next city council meeting on July twenty-first. The city's Historic Preservation Commission will be meeting this Wednesday, the ninth, at nine AM. And then, I know you're all very well-versed in it now, the library board, they will be meeting, uh, that was the topic of the council's new meeting. One of the topics was to learn about the library board. Uh, library board meets on Wednesday, July sixteenth at six PM in the Kozak Room at the library. As was noted during the meeting, Thursday's on the Platte starts this week, so there'll be some temporary closures from four to eight-thirty PM on Thursdays, July tenth through August twenty-first. Uh, Main Street has a debuts Radigan Platte and that half-block of Market Street as well. Um, just another follow-up on Jolly, last week, the city opened up the process to bid on the thirteen lots on the former school site. Um, sealed bids will be accepted until the bid opening, which is on two, at two PM on Wednesday, July thirtieth. Uh, we anticipate that the city council then would make a ward of bids on, at your August fourth meeting. There are instructions available on the city's website as well as a full bid package. Um, we do have one term that's available on our Human Relations Commission, it's due to our resignation. Uh, this term is for one year and would expire in May of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, we'll accept expression of interest forms through Thursday, July twenty-fourth. And then, uh, anticipate the city council would make an appointment at the August fourth meeting. And then just a, uh, quick note and a thank you to Maddie for her internship. Um, it'll be concluded before our next city council meeting, so thank you, Maddie, for your presentations.
All right. Thank you, Maddie. Thank you, John, for your report. Uh, next item we have are the bills. Do you want to have a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions? Counselor Price?
So I'd like to note that I'm going to abstain from number one fourteen. So my husband and I did a, a re- we did the re-tree Vermillion and we put up a beautiful honey locust tree on our boulevard and I'm happy to see some other people on here in the invoices payable doing re-tree Vermillion twos, so I hope we get more of those. But I'm going to abstain from number one fourteen.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do item one fourteen first unless anybody else has one they need to abstain. Counselor Genoine?
I don't need to abstain, I'm just curious, Katie, sorry, um, that one is, it says tree rebate and the others, it says re-tree Vermillion project, is, is that the sa- that's all the same? Okay.
Sometimes, so when Nicole enters the bill, sometimes she just types in, but it's, it's the same thing.
Okay, thanks. Sounds, holy, that was really dark. Sounds like we should probably, uh, I, I would move that we pay, or we, yeah, pay one fourteen.
Second. Motion to pay item number one fourteen, uh, and a second by Counselor Toller. Any discussion on one fourteen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay? Item one fourteen is approved. Any discussion on any of the other items? Number sixty-nine, John, real quick, irrigation system, was that for a new install? Did we do some, something on?
Is that the park? Excuse me, the golf course?
This is installed irrigation system. Number sixty-nine. Har- Harley Lewin?
It might be we were installing a, uh, irrigation system in the front of the bluffs, is it that one?
Okay, all right, that's the only question I had.
Can you approve all the balance of the bills?
Motion to approve the balance of bills by Counselor Price, is there a second? Second by Counselor Cheeseman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay? Good news is we're out of the tornado worry, I just got a message. Just wind and hail now.
Well, and nighttime, it's nighttime.
Yeah. More business for Mike. There is nothing else on the agenda other than executive session. Is there a motion to move into exec session?
Second.
Whoa, okay, I got a motion by Counselor Toller and a second by Counselor Pre- Counselor Murrah, okay, just give it to you. Uh, we will, do I need all in favor of that one?
Yes.
All in favor of moving to exec session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay? We are now in executive session.